We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We would entertain any requests to speak on an agenda item from the audience. If you would like to do so, Sarah has cards or there's cards in the back and you can write your question on that and get that to Sarah. We'll move into the consent agenda. That is included in the packets. There's a paper copy in the back. Board members all receive that ahead of time on our iPads. In the past, we have read through the consent agenda. This has caused many stutters and mispronunciations and has taken several minutes. And we don't technically have to do it, so we have all received those in the past. I'm not going to read through those. If anybody has an item that they would like to pull out of the consent agenda for further consideration, we can do that. Otherwise, we would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we approve of our consent agenda? Excuse me?
Second.
Any further discussion? John?
Yeah, the bills are all in order, just so you know.
Fantastic, thank you.
So, sorry.
No. We have a motion and a second. Bills in order. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. What a special student spotlight we have this month. We have three students. The principals come up and introduce them?
Well, I get to introduce all of them.
Fantastic.
Okay, well greetings from North Elementary School where I have the honor tonight of introducing two third graders and a second grader tonight. There were just so many to choose from, I had to narrow it down, but I had to go with these three and we're going to call it girl power tonight, I think. So, starting on my left right here, we have Freya Peterson, who is a second grader, and then Kalen Lola, who's a third grader, and Maya Knutson, who's also a third grader. And these three individuals were chosen by their teachers because of their constant high marks on their report card. Kind of going above and beyond, recently we had Arts and Academic Night and they take it, some of them took it upon themselves to put a lot of submissions into visual arts or performing arts, and their teacher just says they are wonderful examples of leaders in the classroom. So, when we were able to do this, I get to spend some time with our spotlight students and question them a little bit and I always ask them, like, we know you love spending time at North Elementary School, but when you can't be there, like when it's closed and it's the weekend and stuff, like what do you choose to do with your free time? So, that was the first question that I asked them. So, Freya, what do you like to do in your free time when you can't be at North?
I like to watch movies, shopping at the mall, and spending time with Mykis Davis, big partner.
How about you, Kalen?
Um, I like to do Girl Scouts activities and I really like to do cookie sales and I like to play sports like golf, basketball, bowling, tennis, and snowmobiling.
Very good. How about you, Maya?
I like to play Legos, go sledding on my sledding hill, and playing outside on my swing set, and also going to my 4H meetings.
Very good. I know they're great examples of just leadership outside the building as well. And then when we met, I noticed a common theme for all of them and they all love to bake and cook. So, Freya, what's something that you always like to bake and cook?
I like to bake pizza with my dad and cook some Chinese food with my mom.
Very good. Kalen?
I like to bake cake and cookies sometimes and cupcakes.
Okay, Maya?
And I like to bake cupcakes. And sometimes cookies.
Very good. And then usually bring them to your principal after baking. All right, and then another piece when I was able to sit down and talk with them, Freya, she already had written out her presentation for the evening and it was wonderful, so I asked her if she'd be okay reading it tonight. So, would you like to read that?
Hi, everyone, I'm Freya. I'm a second grader from North Elementary. I came from China three years ago. I couldn't speak much English at that time. Now I speak English very well. My mom is teaching me Chinese. I work hard at school. I like reading and writing. I love art the best. I draw a lot of pictures. I'm respectful and responsible. I'm friendly to my class. I help others when they need help. After school, I study at home for one hour. Then I do something fun. Sometimes I play with my hamster. I like spending time with my family. I enjoy swimming, fishing, and skiing. St. Peter Library is also my favorite place to go. I often borrow books and movies there. Thank you for the great honor.
And then Kalen, how about, so Kalen, you submitted a number of pieces of artwork cards tonight. Can you describe those a little bit?
Um, I painted an owl that I made in an after-school art class and a few years ago, I made two flowers also in after-school class where you put the top of a plate in a flower shape into a lettuce spinner and you put paint on and then you spin it and you add a stem, so I made two of those. And then, in second grade, I got a picture of a galaxy rocket. I made an art into the art show, so I put it in the Arts and Academic Night. And then I also did a tree I made with my grandma.
Very good. They were wonderful pieces of work. And then Maya, how about you? You are an avid reader. You are currently reading what series or your favorite series?
A series of unfortunate events.
Yeah.
I like them because they're like, have a lot of activities and they're fun because they have like mysteries sometimes.
They're probably gloomy too, aren't they? Now, you three have some fans in the audience, right? You have parents here, right? And I believe we also have a teacher back there watching over your shoulder, right? So, would you like, Freya, would you like, could you point out your parents and say what their names are?
That's my mom and her name is Doris. That's my dad and his name is Paul.
Very good. Kalen, how about you?
Um, that's my mom right there, her name is Crystal.
Maya?
Um, my mom's way back there, her name is Kate and my dad's name is Brown.
Kalen, you have another fan back there.
That's Miss Stealin the Ball.
Great job, girls. Any questions?
Well, I'm wondering if you guys would maybe think about becoming student representatives to the student council or to the school board, I, from the student council someday, like Ms. Izzy here.
Right here.
So, that'd be a great thing to be. We could use your help on the school board. You're thinking about it.
They're ensigning right now.
Yeah, that's good.
What's your hamster's name?
Um, Sophia.
Well, congratulations. You guys did a great job tonight. Thank you for coming and thank you for sharing. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. You can stay for the rest of the meeting, but you don't have. All right, thank you very much. That was wonderful. Moving on to the student council report.
I feel like mine's not going to be as good as that.
Tough act to fall. Is there a hamster in it?
No. My mom never let me have one. Um, as he said, my name is Izzy. I'm a senior at the high school. So, one thing, Mrs. Engeldinger and I were going to talk about a while ago, but we never got the chance to, is you guys probably saw on social media, we started a new campaign with Project for Teens called They Lied and We Know It About Vaping. So, that's something that's been like kind of busy in our schools at lunch and then we also did it at the basketball game against Mini Haha Academy and then also at one of the hockey games earlier this year. It's just helping to educate like our students about the risks of vaping and the lies that like vaping companies tell us in campaigns. So, it's been really awesome. We also partnered with Cambria, which has been really cool. They've been able to give like our students, we gave out towels, stress balls, cookies one day at lunch, and t-shirts. So, and they also put a really cool kiosk, I don't know if you saw it on Facebook or anything, in our school. So, that was super cool and since I'm in Project for Teens, I was also able to be a part of that. So, it was like a different leadership opportunity. And then recently we had Snow Week, which was like a bunch of activities in the high school. So, we did pod decorating and I don't know, I don't think there, Mr. Hildebrandt posted any pictures on Facebook, but, so each grade gets a pod and then you work with a teacher and you like decorate a pod based, this year we did it on board games. And then we also got to like, came in on the weekends and stuff to like make it look special and then we had a lot of games just so that we could, like it wasn't like the same thing like regular day, it would made it more special. And then we had coronation and then different dress-up days throughout the week last week.
That's awesome.
So, during that, the anti-bake campaign, is that when they brought in those giant, they look like beanbag chair furniture? We should get those and have them all the time.
Yeah.
It looks super comfortable.
They were super comfortable.
That would get out of them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job.
Nice job.
Well, we'll move on to our action items. The first is to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between St. Peter Public Schools and APT Machine.
As the, as an honored guest are coming up to talk about that, just a quick background. At your January 6th school board meeting, you approved the addition of two per technical education offerings, one in Saints manufacturing, the other with work-based learning. Those both require that we have business partnerships, intentional business partnerships and industry partnerships in the community. This is an area that I know we've been talking about for some time and it's an exciting night to have it come to fruition and be in front of us. And with that, Mrs. Engeldinger, I'll let you take over.
Yeah, we're really excited to be partnering with Brian Mayo and APT. Cory Odland is here in her role as our workforce development coordinator. So, she's been out kind of pounding the pavement and figuring out who best we can partner with at the high school, not just in manufacturing areas, but in all. And this really made sense. Brian has kids, has had a son come through the system, his daughter's a senior and he's always been really interested in our metals and manufacturing program at the high school. So, now with the new facility, the new space, Mike Reiser on board, who's really willing to partner with outside companies, it was a perfect opportunity. So, we were really excited that he was willing and able to partner with the high school. Along with that, came a long list of pretty expensive machinery for the, and equipment for the high school and Mr. Reiser and Cory helped write a grant through MDE, through Future Ready CTE. And so, we got a $45,000 grant for, I will let you speak to the equipment. This is where my expertise ends and yours begins. So, Brian, if you want to talk just a little bit about what the partnership, about what we hope it will look like, that would be great.
Well, I guess I was contacted here a few months ago about starting this and I've, back when the school was being built, I kind of wanted to be involved and hopefully get some machining and some more metalworking stuff going and it didn't happen at that time, but when the opportunity came up now, it was a good time to do it. I've got a little bit more free time now, so I'm hoping I can be a little more involved and help out as much as I can and I know the school did, with that grant, they did purchase a mill, which is basically two types of equipment. You've got a mill and a lathe. So, we've got one component of it now and then hopefully down the road, another component can be added. And the company they got it from is big into helping schools and stuff like that, so I think there is opportunities out there to pursue more and keep this growing. The conversation with Reiser and Dr. Olson and that was kind of to get the Saints Manufacturing going and be able to self-generate some money and stuff. And there's a lot of ideas out there of different products and stuff that can be made, whether it's made specifically for certain things or, I know there's talk about stuff that can be sold in a store up at the school, things like that. And to go out in the community and basically be somewhat like of a job shop or do work for other businesses in the area. I'm looking forward to it. I think it's great for the school. They're with South Central College nearby and they have a great program for machine tool technology. I think it's, high schools need to be feeder programs for that and they're struggling with enrollment and stuff to get some of these students into.
Another addition to the program, Mr. Reiser, as of fall of 2020, will have his work experience license. So, potentially kids who are interested can potentially earn credits going out, for example, and spending some time at APT and other manufacturing places for credit, so.
For the last couple of years, we've been doing internships. We've been getting a few students from Mankato East, Mankato West. I think we've got one from St. Peter right now, but it works out well. It's, they come out and put their time in and learn some stuff and it's been going really well.
Really relevant learning experiences and that's really what we're after in a program like this.
And they get paid to do it.
And they get, yeah, so it's a double bonus, right? So, Cory, a little bit about kind of how you're reaching out to area businesses and in the region with programs like this.
Yeah, definitely. So, my role, I've been in this all, just over a year as work first development coordinator. It's a grant-funded position through South Central Service Cooperative, working with St. Peter Schools, Lusford Henderson, and Tri-City United Schools. So, my role is really that liaison between employers and school districts to find opportunities for students to explore careers and gain career-related experiences. So, this idea of moving forward is something that biggest Saints Manufacturing is really exciting. It's kind of easy when you've got a supportive administration and a willing employer partner and a very enthusiastic teacher. Mr. Reiser is going to be great with this. And so, this is probably the biggest thing we've done. Other things are getting students out in the communities to shadow and then also embedding some career-related projects in the classrooms. So, Mr. Sean Moore in his entrepreneurship classes does a couple project with Courpo Canopy, Cora Anderson, some marketing and social media projects that they've done. So, this is some things we've been working on.
So, board members' questions? Maybe you may have.
Don't ask me about the mill.
Brian, you and I, we were neighbors and we've talked about this and are we, we're getting closer, you think, to a state-of-the-art learning facilities as far as manufacturing goes?
Yeah, I think while this initial purchase of that machine is going to be a huge step, the next step, yeah, we're going to have to purchase the lathe portion of it.
Okay.
And then it kind of hits all the targets that kind of need to be hit. So, it's a huge step and I think, I think it's going to be great for the school and to get some students interested in that stuff that's.
I appreciate your helping us, kind of guide us in those direction that we need to go with what's going on now in manufacturing, so thank you.
Yeah, very excited that you, so what's the lathe cost?
It's about the same, so.
About the same.
Yeah, I think the quotes were right in that $30,000 to $40,000 and then there's support equipment to it, but that's fairly minimal and can be purchased as things go along. And kind of the good thing about this is if it can start self-generating some money and there's things that can be made and sold or, obviously if I have things that I think the school can do, then I can send it and I know that hasn't all been worked out yet, how the payment stuff can work, but I'm sure it will get figured out and.
Not to put the cart before the horse, but there's going to be a second round of this Future Ready CTE grant for fall. We found out about it just a short time before the grant was due for things that could be implemented right away, the second semester of the school year, so you know, I think maybe a lot of schools in the region weren't quite ready to write a grant and we were. It was perfect timing. So, there is another round of this that hopefully will be, will be ready to get that.
Well, you know, it's really, really exciting and thank you, Brian, for your willingness to participate in this program and educational offering with us. You know, I've had an opportunity to get around the state of Minnesota a lot in the last year and I've seen a few of these programs, but it really is the kind of the cutting-edge high school program that we're going to be able to offer to give our students the kinds of learning experiences, not only in manufacturing and machining, but in running a business that will be really, really important. So, we're very excited about it, excited about having you as a partner, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
So, recommend your approval of the formal agreement with APT Machining.
So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. I think the first thing that they're going to make are actually parts for a 19th century threshing treadmill for the Oliver Kelly farm, so literally make anything, so.
They should be able to do that.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Cory, thank you.
Action item number two, consider approval of superintendent, search, staff, and community interview teams. Yes, as part of the superintendent hiring process, because we still have to do that, we thought it was important to have some added involvement besides just the school board and so we, through our personnel committee, sat down and thought about a community committee and a staff, school district staff committee and the types of representation we would want. So, when we thought about St. Peter, St. Peter is made up of a lot of different organizations and individuals and how could we best represent the community? And so, we came together as a personnel committee, we came before the board at the last meeting and said, you know, we think we should have a representative from the nonprofit community, we should have representatives from the business community, we should have other representatives. And so, the board said that looks like a good idea, moved forward. And so, we got together again in the personnel committee and recommended some individuals. We have asked them ahead of time because to not ask them and have them find out about this on TV would be cruel. So, we do have a slate of folks for the community committee and the staff committee that we are willing, are excited to bring to the board today and I can't open my iPad fast enough. So, just to read those into the record, we're looking at the school district staff committee. We're introducing these names for approval. Mark Bachman, operation and maintenance supervisor. Jeff Dietrich, head custodian at the middle school. Darren Doherty, from North. Annette Engeldinger, from the high school. Angie Fogel, paraprofessional from the high school. Keith Hanson, teacher at the high school. Jake Malls, teacher at the middle school. Kim Meyer, principal's secretary at South Elementary. Jody Nixon, teacher at North Elementary. Mateve Pravky, special programs, HR administrator, early childhood, several other hats probably. Tim Regner, business manager. Mariposa Romero, cultural liaison. Afy Sagat, cultural liaison with the district. And Mary Thompson, the head cook at South Elementary, with Mateve Pravky serving as the chairperson of that committee. And then I will also read the names of the community interview team that we are recommending. Mohammed Abdul Kadir, who represents nonprofit community in St. Peter. Alex Boconegra, student at the high school. Teresa Hildebrandt, the business community. Ed Lee, Chamber of Commerce. Izzy Lind, student. Chris Marlowe, standing school committee. Brian Mayo, from business community. Rachel Moore, also from the business community. Tracy Pyman, from the Booster Club. Todd Pravky, from the city of St. Peter. Gabriella Rumpel, from the Senior Center. Megan Ruble, from Gustavus. Bernadette Volk, who's on the standing school committee. And Keith Winter, who represents the agricultural community. And Keith would actually be the chair of that committee, so thank you. Do we have any initial discussion with those? So, they would join us on the 5th and 6th of March for interviews?
I move the approval of the superintendent, search, staff, and community interview teams as stated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
I think it's a smart way to go about doing this. Ultimately, the school board is the committee ultimately making the decision. However, this allows us to be more well-informed than if we were just all on our own. A lot of great people in both these groups that we have a lot of trust in, so I'm looking forward to their insight.
Great. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to action item number three, consider approval of the protocol for the community and staff interview teams. And I can read that into the record as well. This is on page 30 of your packets, but protocol is a stated, number one, a representative of staff and community interview team will be appointed by the school board. You just did that. The chairperson will need to attend the MSBA-led interview training on March 2nd, 2020. I'm sure they both, right? I'm aware of that and are available. The chairperson will conduct the interview for his or her respective team. All team members will provide input to the chairperson on the perceived strengths of each candidate interviewed in round one. And we've talked at length with the school board about really focusing on strengths of candidates. And then finally, the chairperson will share the team input with the full school board following the completion of round one interviews.
And I think the way that we've talked about that is the, you would deliberate each candidate that is interviewed in the first round and the board would have the first go at identifying strengths and matches for the position based on the profile that you've selected. Once you've gone through candidate A, as an example, then the opportunity would be available for both the staff committee chairperson and the community committee chairperson to provide the same kind of information to you that they would have collected from their respective interview teams. So, I think that's a good process. It's a good way to have you gain some additional insights from different perspectives about the candidates and again, asking questions that you've identified based on the candidate profile and the stakeholder input that was received.
Thank you. These interviews again are March 5th and 6th, 3:30 to 6:30 at the high school. The board interviews are public meetings, just like every meeting of the board, so if the public wants to show up and sit in the audience for that, that is welcome. We won't be taking questions or communication from the public at those meetings, but they are public meetings. Do we have a motion and a second?
I move the approval of the protocol for our community and staff interview teams.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Nope. I was just going to say that we do have some closed meetings, but.
Yes.
For privacy issues and personnel and things like that.
Right. They do start open, we close.
Yes, yeah, so.
We open, then we, we leave.
Presume on people to show up for a meeting that was going to be closed.
Right. Absolutely. We do have a motion and a second to approve the protocol for community and staff interview teams. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Number four in the action items, consider approval of the fund balance reserve goal.
On an annual basis, you're asked to consider a fund balance, balance reserve goal. And your board policy 004.13, managing the fund balance process, requires you to adopt your fund balance reserve goal prior to March 1st. So we're close. Being the board meeting is February 20th, it got shifted due to the President's Day holiday. Now, you've had a number of discussions over the course of this fiscal year about the fund balance. You've looked at four-year rollouts. In all of those four-year rollouts, at least for the foreseeable future, fiscal year '21, fiscal year '22 and so forth, you've identified a 60-day fund balance reserve goal. So the recommendation, based on the discussion we've had at a number of meetings, including your special school board meeting held on February 3rd, would be to maintain the 60-day fund balance reserve goal. So I'll stop if you might have comments. Treasurer Carlson, anything?
No, I, I, I think that we, we need to have safeguards in case, I mean, while the economy's doing great, it hasn't always been great. And probably will come a point where it's not going well again. And we don't want to get caught in a position where we're not able, or where we're really living month to month, trying to get through. And a lot of, a lot of school districts are in tougher positions than we are. We don't want to go down that road, so.
And just as a little bit of added background, I mean, with, with that identification of your fund balance reserve goal, that kicks in place our, our rollout strategy to be able to maintain that 60-day fund balance reserve as we move over the next several fiscal years. And we've done that in terms of the draft rollouts you've seen. But again, this gives us the, the clear goal, have to continue with that particular approach.
And further, the number isn't just arbitrary. It's, it's been recommended to us by auditors and MSBA has spoke about it in the past. So it's not just a number that we throw out there. It's, it's important. That being said, I will say that if we need one more piece of machinery and we've got a, we've got a possible grant to cover it, I would be up for 59 days, just to make sure we can buy that.
I was going to tell you before that, you could be thinking, looking at that as a two-for-one. You've got one free and you, you know, so.
Yeah. And I'm only half kidding. I think, I think it's, I think it's, if that's the piece of machinery that we still need to be elite, I think we need to, and this is probably a discussion for another time in a committee, but I think, I think it's important enough that, you know, if we have to come back and change it to 59 days just because we want to get that piece of equipment now and then switch it back to 60 when we get the grant, I think that that would be something that the finance committee should consider.
Yeah, I think that speaks to our decision-making process. And we've had lots of conversations before tonight.
Right.
Going to vote on it in a minute, but we've been talking about it a lot. And this is something that comes out in every budget rollout. And, you know, we do want the flexibility as a board to be able to make purchases and having the fund balance, if we're looking at a rollout where, you know, our enrollment isn't growing or it's shrinking and we're going to have to make some adjustments. We, we have one, two, three years to make those adjustments, not, well, we have to make drastic cuts in the next month or, you know, we're insolvent. So, but on the other hand, you know, we don't want to have a fun, fun balance so low that we can't cash flow and other things. And we don't want to have one so high that we're not using voters' money in the way that they intended. So 60, along with the auditor's recommendation, I think is really that sweet pot, sweet spot for, for St. Peter. And I think when Dr. Olson took over as superintendent, the first time you had like three and a half days of fund balance.
60 is much better.
Do we have a motion and a second? I thought we did.
I, I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Action item number five, consider approval of the school board meeting dates and times for July 2020 through June 2021.
The schedule that you have in your packet really reflects the same basic schedule that you've used over the last several years. Dates obviously just shift because of changing calendars and so forth. But you have your normal school board meetings on the third Monday of each month. There are a couple of changes. One is in January because of your organizational meeting and a potential conflict with the Minnesota School Boards Association Leadership Conference. And the other is in February, where you'd have a conflict with President's Day. But the, the schedule is again the same. And just note that, that at the bottom of your schedule, you always include, and I think that's a great point, that the school board reserves the right to change or modify the meeting calendar based on the needs of the school board or the school district. I would recommend your adoption of the board meeting dates, times, calendar for fiscal year '21.
I move we approve our school board meeting dates and times for the year 2020 and '21.
I second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Action item number six, consider approval of four-year comprehensive long-term capital projects plan. Something else we're going to talk about a lot.
You've, you've had the next two items, the four-year capital projects plan and the special capital projects budget plan in front of you really since last fall. So you've had them in, in front of you at, I think, at least two finance committee meetings, a study session or two. And you had an opportunity to discuss the plans in more detail at your February 3rd special school board meeting that we had just several weeks ago. But the idea is to ensure that we have a, a clear plan with the big-ticket items that we need to accomplish in terms of maintenance and care of our buildings and facilities. So you really have the 2019, 2020 projects, 2020, 21 projects, 2021, 2022 projects, and 2022, 2023 projects. The most important list. I was hoping I wasn't going to really goof that up. The most important out of that list are the projects for this coming summer. And really those projects focus on the middle school greenhouse roof, some flooring in the caf, in the cafeteria in room 311 at the middle school. A reconfiguration of the middle school media center, where you'll be adding some flex rooms and some small group conference rooms. Some light and ceiling replacement and repair of some ceilings and lights in the first floor. And then some gymnasium lobby repair. You recall that one of the goals that you had several years ago was to focus your big-ticket projects in one particular building if possible. That is one of the key reasons why you elected to have an early start to last school year. So you're out prior to June 1st. It's really important as you reach out to contractors and to construction folks. They're, they're ready, willing and able to get at things on, on June 1st. Maybe not as ready, willing and able to get at things in the middle of July. So it's really important that, that we have the, the go-ahead in, at this point in February, so that we can get contractors lined up, get the best quotes or bids that are possible and move forward with those projects. Questions that anybody might have?
Mr. Doherty, I see that you have one thing on this list, but you did have three students of the month tonight, so.
So it made it worth it. And then some.
Well, you actually got last year, Mr. Olson.
So this all averages out to be about $400,000. Is that, because that's what we have for the long-term, that's right?
That's, that's, that's the goal. And one of the things you'll see is in the very last year of the four years, the total drops significantly. And that's because you can borrow ahead on your long-term facilities maintenance revenue. But then once you've sort of borrowed from that bucket, you need to fill the bucket up again. So beginning in 2022, 2023, you'll have smaller projects, smaller number items, so that the bucket of money can fill up. And then we'll be ready for our next round of roofs and parking lots and tennis courts and all things Minnesota that need to be repaired on buildings and grounds.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I assume.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Action item number seven, consider approval of special capital projects budget plan.
Again, as I mentioned, you've had these items in front of you a number of times over the past school year. You'll also recall that we've used a capital projects levy for the past 10 years to provide revenue for a number of our buildings and grounds projects. Since that levy was, was originally passed, the long-term facilities maintenance revenue levy has come in. And you've been able to use that. So you had your last capital projects levy a year ago. There are about $120,000 left in the account, if you will, from the capital projects levy. And then working with the finance committee and the facilities committee and in addition to the co-curricular committee, one of the goals has been to do some upgrades to Floyd B. Johnson Field. So in specific, there are plans in place to replace a scoreboard. We need to remove and replace the long jump pits because they're inside the track and have some cement around them and prove to be dangerous for soccer players and football players and the like. So those are the two primary projects that are being planned to have taken care of prior to the start of next school year. And those numbers are fairly strong estimates, but they're going to shift some in terms of dollars. But I think that those two items, the scoreboard, removing, replacing the long jump pit will take most of the remaining capital projects funds that you designated for that. So again, I'd recommend your approval of the special projects budgets plan. But in addition to that, you'll note that you have the $200,000 that are the remaining funds from the bond to build the new high school. And in discussions that you've had a number of times, again, over the past several months, a focus has been on having some outdoor restrooms that are located in the southeast corner of the, of the Community Spirit Park, which would be near the baseball field, near the soccer field, the university football and athletic fields and so forth. So plans are in place to get some quotes, bids if necessary for that project. But it will stay within the $200,000 at this point that are set aside. And so again, the special capital projects, the Floyd B. Johnson Field enhancements and the restroom building at Community Spirit Park are what are being recommended.
Thank you, Dr. Olson.
Yes.
Dr. Olson, where are we at with, because I, it's my understanding the city is going to build a similar building. How similar, I mean, are we trying to build pretty much the same type of facility?
We're trying to, trying to get, have the same kinds of facilities. So they're kind of on opposite corners of the Community Spirit Park. So ours is kind of right off the southeast corner of the high school. There is in the northwest corner of the Community Spirit Park, near their, near the softball complex on the park and the tennis courts, et cetera. So I think it's important, I, I know I've been to a number of events and watched people trying to decide if they want to go into the porta potties or not. And so I think, I think this will be a good, a good upgrade.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the special capital projects budget plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. That concludes the action items for tonight. I don't want to jinx anything, but. And the clock's back, so. That moves us to information items, school board committee appointments for 2020. This was communicated earlier to school board members. We don't need to formally approve them. If you have any questions or comments, we can entertain those. I don't have anything further to add.
No, I think you've got a, a good, a robust number of committees. It'll certainly keep you busy for the next year.
Absolutely. All right. Information item number two, first reading of legislative priorities for 2020. This is a handout. To just read what our legislative priorities are. John, you have been on that committee of one and you continue to serve. I am happy to read these, or if you would like to read them.
Um, at, at your pleasure, whichever you wish.
We should rotate like a duet.
I, I can just talk about it a little bit. With the, with the legislature getting going, Dr. Olson and I got together and talked about what some of the priorities are and what, what is being talked about up at the legislature. And we, we came up with this list of six. We, we spent about an hour, 45 minutes to an hour discussing different things, other things were left off. Basically, what we're looking for is feedback from the board on the order that we put them in, because that is actually an order that we, that we will talk about them. On the board copy, it talks about, it has a note under each of them. When we talk, that's mainly a reminder for me and for Dr. Olson, so that when we do go up, it seems that we get better, we get better response when we have a story that goes with each of the points. So that the story isn't necessarily for anybody but Dr. Olson and us, just to remind us of our points of emphasis when we're visiting with our legislators. But number one is increase the equalization factor for the operating referendum, debt service levies and local optional revenue. I'm going to actually, this one, we talked about, why don't you talk about that a little bit? Because it gets into an area that you're a little more versed in.
You know, it's, it's the, the, the situation in Minnesota is that a dollar of tax doesn't, or tax request doesn't impact everybody the same way, depending upon which district you're in. So districts that are high property wealth districts can raise more money with less impact on various taxable kinds of properties. So one of the key examples that really struck me over the last couple of years is, if we went back to planning for the school bond referendum here in St. Peter, you were using an average price home in St. Peter at the time. The average price home was $160,000. You were asking for a $59 million building bond. The $59 million building bond would impact the average price home of $160,000 in St. Peter at that time to the tune of $225 a year. Now, I did some work with the Moorhead Public Schools on their building project a year ago. They were seeking a $110 million bond referendum, as opposed to the $59 million bond referendum that we had. Their average price home was $200,000, so $40,000 more than our average price home in 2015. The tax impact for 110- The tax impact for a $110 million bond on a $200,000 home was $94 a year. So what happens is, it's easier for the tax homeowner in a place like Morehead to vote yes on a bond referendum because it doesn't impact their property as much. So what the equalization factor does is it tries to level that playing field a little bit. So it will say that the state will pay a larger portion of the tax bill for a place like St. Peter, so it doesn't impact adversely the property owners as much as the example that I just gave you. So equalization is a really important thing, and it's not just in terms of bond referendums, it's on operating referendums, it's on long term facilities maintenance referendums, it's on a number of things. So that's a really important one to to push for, because it's really a fairness issue.
Number two is to increase the general education basic formula by 1% for the 2020-21 school year. This is, because we're in a surplus, this is a time where we could try to catch up to where we need to be with school funding. Currently, 93% of Minnesota's 330 school districts receive less aid per pupil today than they did in 2003, adjusted for inflation. So that's why it's such a high spot on there, and because there is a surplus. It's something they don't normally consider in the second year, but is something that is definitely on the table for this this session.
So that would be 1% on top of what was approved in the budget last year.
Correct.
Two percent.
Yep. Allow school board renewal of all existing and future operating levies. This is something that the city and county has the right to do, that the school board does not currently, and we wanted to see if we can't find out why they've made that distinction, and see if we can't get that changed. Number four, fully fund Minnesota's portion of the cross subsidy of special education. Currently, the St. Peter School District allocates 1.9 million out of our general fund to cover mandated special education costs. We think that if something's going to be mandated, you better supply the funding to pay for that. And it is, it is a thing that has been, that has happened in the past that is going to take time to slowly get reversed. Align Minnesota's special education rules and statutes with federal law in order to reduce special education paperwork mandates. Some elements of this were brought up last year in last legislative session, and, but basically, we want our special education teachers to spend more time with the students. It is, I've been talking to special ed teachers, I mean, it is a ton, a ton of paperwork. And that the time that they spend on that is time not spent with the students, and that's where their expertise, that's why they got into special education. So that's a big one. And lastly, refrain from passing new underfunded or unfunded legislative mandates. Kind of relates to number four, but each school district in Minnesota is an independent school district with unique needs, allowing locally elected school boards. It's important to allow the locally identified school boards, elected school boards to have the ability to see how to meet those needs. And so, again, talking about legislative mandates. Dr. Olson, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think you did an excellent job. Board member Carlson, I think that it covers a variety of different things, and it really gets at some of the key issues, I think, that impact not only our our school district, but our school district taxpayers in a lot of different ways.
And I would appreciate if anybody has any feedback to let me know, and if there's something that's missing that you think is important. We'd like to bring this back for a final reading for the March meeting, and then head up to the St. Paul that following week.
I like priorities laid out. I like the order that they're in, so I've got no grade that.
I think you'll be busy that week.
Yeah, I'll be busy. I hope.
All right, that was an informational item, first reading. Going to informational item number three, the Minnesota School Boards Association Local Central Resolution.
It should be control, as opposed to central, so I missed that.
Oh, no worries.
The local control resolution is something that the school board association is asking individual school boards to pass, and it really gets at what board member Carlson talked about on the last proposed legislative priority. Refrain from, excuse me, number three, which is allowing school boards to renew, no, I'm missing it, which one is it?
Number six.
Unfunded mandates.
Yes, number six.
So unfunded mandates, allow local school boards to make decisions. I think there are about 38 school boards in Minnesota so far that have passed the local control resolution. So I wanted to include it for informational purposes, for you to take a chance to look at it, discuss it if you'd like, be something that before we come back, as maybe John and I meet again with the legislative committee, to consider whether or not you'd want to take a look at formally adopting this resolution in March. But again, it really gets at allowing our school board the local decision making authority, and restricting any decisions made at the state level to allow you to respond to the needs of your students, your residents, and the school district as a whole. Questions on it?
You said 33?
I think 30, 33 roughly. And that was maybe a week or so ago, so I think it's really getting out there right now.
Yeah.
But as boards have reformed, I think there'll be more and more that will pass this.
Yeah.
And this is to give MSBA some strength in their negotiations and lobbying efforts up at the Capitol.
Yeah, if they can, if they can end up saying, you know, we've had, pick a percent up, 75% of the school boards in Minnesota have passed this resolution and support local control, that says a lot, because state legislators listen to school board members, because school board members, and you guys know this, are locally elected. You've been elected by voters, and you have some clout with them when you talk to them about things. So that'd be a really important piece to consider, I think.
Thank you, Dr. Olson. Any further discussion? Now, we move into reports, principles.
Get up in here.
Excuse me. Well, good evening, everyone. Things are hopping in early childhood. We have our conferences coming up. Neck, we're cozy.
We are cozy.
This is what teen looks like. So we have conferences coming up next week, and then the week of March 5th and 6th. We're excited to have parents come in and talk with teachers and see how well their kids are doing at school. We also have our school readiness open house on Saturday, February 29th, from 9 until 11:00, and that's the opportunity for families to come in, see our center, get information about classes for next year. We're already planning for next year, ask questions, get registration papers, et cetera. So we're excited about that. And then, with my my special programs hat on, today was our first day of our second session of Stars Academy for kindergarten through fourth grade, and Stars Academy is an after school targeted services program that we qualify through our work as an ALC. And so we started K4 today, and then next week, we'll start our 5'8" program. So we'll look for good reports on how the first day went, and put it hard next week with all of our classes.
Good evening, and these people probably won't tell you, but they probably can smell me, because I just came off of McTeacher Night at McDonald's. It was a perfect night for us to sit close, don't you think? It's wonderful, yes. And it was a fish wish. So we had another banner crowd out there, and I think they were happy when I left, because I created a parking spot for them. Someone came in and said, we'll go through the drive thru, this is crazy. So it always, it's a wonderful night, the kids are so surprised to see us at McDonald's. So it's, it really is fun. So kudos to the parent council who makes the arrangements, and then the funds from that night. And we typically do raise about $500 for our parent council that evening, but just want to say thanks to the teachers, too, because they're there, and, and boy, those people at McDonald's make the job look easy, we can say. We need to go back to school, because it is not near as easy as it looks. We also had a very busy past couple of weeks. We celebrated the 100th day of school, along with our first, or an early release, and a late start, and Valentine's Day, which includes candy. And if, that is the biggest holiday in the building, because they know they're getting candy. So it was kind of nice that it was on an early release day, and that that worked out well for everyone. Our access assessments are continuing for our students, our ELL students. And last Friday, during our early release time, we had the opportunity for Dave Rebar and Laura Zender had requested a grant from the Ed Foundation, and they received a grant to create sensory boxes for all of the classrooms. So Dave and Laura, along with Brittany Gletka, did a session on just working with students of trauma, and the more we learn about the effects of trauma on students and how we can serve their needs, it was just a very, very great time for us to just be reminded about the fact that kids don't always tell us what they need, and we have to look for behaviors, and we have to look for ways that we can help support them so that they can learn. So thank you to them for doing that. And just a reminder that kindergarten registration packets have been mailed out. If people have not received them, they can call south, and we'll make sure that they get one. And kindergarten registration night will be March 19th.
All right, greetings from North Elementary. Before I get into North, Doreen mentioned the access assessment going on, which is actually K-12. That's going on throughout the district right now, and that's an annual assessment required by the state for language acquisition, which I always include in like the annual report on student achievement. So, yeah, and before we know it, we'll have some MCA's going on at the high school, and then the rest of the district, third grade through 11. So that's, that's right upon us. As far as North goes, we had a great arts and academic night on February 3rd. Three students will be going on to regional competitions for the science fair at MSU, which is always exciting. 30 students put visual displays on, and then 15 performances in the gym. So this is all just voluntary, like there is no like coordinating of kids to do this, they they just sign up, just because they want to do it. And two of the three that were here tonight did that, and that's what I think is so cool about it, is just pure raw kid talent, you just let them go. Also, we have I Love to Read Month going on right now. A favorite on Tuesday and Thursday is a mystery reader during announcements throughout the build, so somebody in the building, the kids have to try to figure out who the reader is on on the announcements each morning, so they're reading some clips out of some poetry or sections out of a book, and it's always Mrs. Berg, for some reason. It's never Mrs. Berg that she didn't want to read any of them, but they always picked Mrs. Berg. I don't know what the pattern with that is. And then, the fourth grade gets to take off on on February 27th for their kindness retreat, which will be at Johnson Hall, and that is always a great retreat. Youth Frontiers puts it on. The fourth grade just come back, just all geared up, and just ready to roll, and kids that potentially, you know, maybe had some conflict during the year have just flipped over a new leaf after that. And I think, you know, it's just a great way to kind of start the send off to middle school, knowing that, yep, they were, they were leaders throughout the year this year. They'll be the little fish in the big ocean next year, but at least it gives them a good solid send off and kind of a restart, kind of get through the end of the year with shining colors, so. Mr. Graff.
Thank you, Mr. Dory.
Transition.
Last Wednesday, our seventh graders presented their History Day projects. This year's History Day theme was breaking barriers, so students did an extended research project on a topic, or a person that they, or an event, or a person that they felt represented breaking barriers in history. And what was exciting about this year is we had a ton of community support. We had three MSU student tutors who were with us just about every day of that project. We had city council members who supported students on various projects. We had Representative Jeff Brand with us for a full day, talking about his role, talking about he loves, how he loves history, and he actually helped kids fine tune their projects. We had Kate Martins from the Treaty Center, who was also with us just about every single day, supporting kids. And then we had members from the League of Women Voters also supporting. So that project had a lot of support this year, and we really appreciate those folks for for taking their time to help us. Overall, we had about 25 to 30 kids. Not everybody has said if they want to or not, but have the opportunity to move on to regions with them. Today, we sent 14 middle school students to Concordia Language Spanish Immersion Camp. They left at 10:30 today, and they'll come back on Sunday, and Inglehorn promised me bring them all back. We have, I think it was 14 middle school students and 31 high school students, so right around 45 students on that trip this weekend. A while back, we offered some training on the graduate portrait through a micro credentialing program, and one of the people who took part in that was Shay Ror Cassie, and we're seeing some of the fruits of that training in a, in a project that he introduced today. And the project is his food and nutrition unit in his seventh grade health class, and the project was developed in conjunction with dieticians from Rivers Edge and Hyvee. And the project culminates in them providing a meal plan for not only just their family, but also individuals with specific health needs. So really cool kind of seeing how that's all coming together. And then lastly, just another plug, March 6th, we have our 5'8" theater performance of How to Speak Minnesotan. The students will do three shows, two for our students during the day, and then one at 7 o'clock at night for the public, so hopefully we see you all there.
Right after. Superintendent.
The, the high school is, is busy as always. Today was a, was an important day. We had representatives, a bus of our FFA students, along with Mr. Reeser, his name is coming up a lot tonight, and Gina Lilienthal attended the House Ag Committee introduction of Landon's Law. Michelle and James Gran were, were introducing that to the House, and Jeff Brand invited the St. Peter FFA and any other students who are interested in in attending that. And Ms. Lilienthal and Mr. Reeser came back. They were really, really happy and excited and emotional about how the day went for, for themselves and the, and the kids who got to, got to be there as well. So that was a really, really nice opportunity for our kids. We, in the CTE World War, Warren Peterson, for the first time, took some of his building trade kids to the Building Trades Convention at the Minneapolis Convention Center, where they, they took part in, they built sheds and playhouses. They had, they had two days to do it, and it wasn't a competition, but, and then I believe that these playhouses were being auctioned off, and stayed overnight, had a great time, and they made it home on one of those tricky weather days that we were waiting, waiting to hear that they had gotten back safely. So those guys had a great time. Opportunity Day is coming up on, on Tuesday, which is the ACT, pre-ACT, job shadowing, and heading off to check out, check out universities. That's Tuesday, and it's, next week is also Thursday, our Farm to School Day, which is, and also in conjunction with that is a career fair in areas of manufacturing and agriculture. That's a really great day to come out for lunch, if any of you are available. I'll, I'll take you through that line and, and get you, but get you lunch. The, the hog that's being served that day was Landon Grants, and so it's also another, another kind of cool reminder to this, to this school about, about Landon. Mock Trial is off to state. If Bob Meeks were still on the board, I'm sure that he would be doing.
We got an email.
Doing, yes.
We did give him an email.
He would be very excited about, to talk about that tonight. Last week, we had parent teacher conferences at the high school, and as you know, as, as our students go through the system, it's, it's harder and harder to engage parents in parent teacher conference night. Our Student Services Office put on a curriculum fair, heading into registration time, and a registration information session, two of them throughout the night for the parents. It was also subzero. It was also sub-zero weather that night. So we will continue to try to offer things that, that parents, parents are interested in attending.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Craft, I've noticed the changes in the middle school lobby outside the gymnasium. And it looks good. It's nice that, that new-to-the-school space feels different than it once did as the high school space, so.
Yeah, we recently had the addition of benches, built-in benches, so students have a spot to kind of hang out after lunch and then before and after school.
Are there any other changes coming along the way?
We're hoping at some point to get some cafe-style tables in there. Because that's where our students hang out in the morning before school starts, just to make it a little bit more comfortable. We also have a few students hang out after school down there. It gives them a spot to maybe put their books to study.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Superintendent Olson?
I have three things I want to cover tonight in the informational piece. The first one is, thank you to all the school board members. It is School Board Recognition Week, February seventeen through the twenty-fourth. And we appreciate all of your hard work and dedication to our students and to the school district and to all the time you spend away from families and jobs to do the good work of educating our students to the level you do. So thank you very much for that. Secondly, we would really like to see if we can set a study session in April. I recognize how busy a time this has been with all of the extra meetings surrounding the superintendent search, but we really need a concentrated period of time in a study session to start talking about all things budget and potential operating referendum. And if that operating referendum is kind of targeted for November of two thousand and twenty, which is what you've talked about. So we've thrown out a couple of different dates. We've thrown on April sixth, we've thrown on April seventh. We tried to see if we could do it via email and, and we had some success, but any, I thought we'd just talk about it tonight. Any, any thoughts that anybody has? It wouldn't necessarily need to be a night meeting, depending upon, you know, we, we can make whatever work that you want at work.
Well, the tenth is Good Friday. And that's, that might not work.
Yeah, but that week, the sixth is really, unless we want to meet on Wednesday, the sixth is the only one that works. I have tennis matches on all the other days. So, and I know there's the world.
The world's best workforce.
If there's any chance that that meeting could move a day.
The world's best workforce would really, we could, as I was just thinking about that, we could, we could probably still hold a world's best workforce meeting and a study session at the same time.
I'm open to anything, whatever works.
April six, Seidor? Yeah, are we talking evening?
Yeah.
That would work the best for me.
Sure.
Middle School Media Center, six-thirty.
Six-thirty. And really, the focus of that particular study session will be to, again, take another look at the four-year rollout, to start looking at your budget adjustment target for next year and to start talking about operating referendum. What we'll try to do for that night on April sixth, is, as schedules permitting, we'll try to get Kelly Smith from Baker Tilly, our financial advisor, down to help provide some additional insight and information about the operating referendum. And you can talk that through and find out what some different tax impacts might be on residential property, commercial property, ag property. Just as a, as a point, I know you remember this, but an operating referendum only taxes one acre in the household in the ag world. It doesn't tax ag production property. So that's different than a bond referendum. So April sixth, six-thirty PM, Middle School Media Center, study session. The final thing is just an update on the superintendent's search. As a reminder, beginning next Wednesday, the twenty-sixth of February, so the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth, you have signed up for time slots to review applications. The applications I visited with MSBA staff today are, are planning on delivering them to our office late in the afternoon on February twenty-fifth. So we'll have, have to have things ready and a system organized for you to look at those applications. You do, you have signed up. You may want to check that out. I think we put the schedule at your, at your spot here tonight. If that time doesn't work or you need a different time, just let Sarah know that. Second reminder, the superintendent's search is the, the selection of candidates to be interviewed. That occurs at your special board meeting on Monday, March second, and that's six-thirty PM in the Middle School Media Center. At that meeting, you'll also give the final approval to the interview questions for round one, and you will undergo some interview training. And so we'll want to make sure, Sarah, I'll have this down, but just as a reminder that, well, ETVE knows about it, but that ETVE and Keith Winters, the chair people of those staff and community committees, know they'll need to be at the interview training as well. Then, your round two, which is scheduled for March twelfth, I've asked the MSBA staff to have a draft schedule of what that day will look like. And what we've talked about is that there would be an opportunity for the final either two or three, depending upon whomever you select for that March twelfth interview, to have a tour of the community. We'll do some school tours. There'll be an opportunity for staff and community members to ask questions of each of the final two or three candidates, and then you'll have your final interview in the evening of, or late afternoon and evening of March twelfth. So we'll want to look at some of those sample schedules and try to get those out next week as well. We get a lot of questions about how many people have applied. In visiting with Sandy Gunlock from MSBA staff today, there have been twenty-five applications that initiated and sixteen have been completed. But what we also know about the application process is people routinely kind of decide, not decide, and then the weekend before the application is due at eleven-fifty-nine PM on Monday, the twenty-fourth of February, they complete the application. So I feel good about those numbers and that you've got sixteen completed. I'm confident that there will be, you know, in the twenties of people who apply. And again, you're looking for six quality candidates that meet your candidate profile to interview on March fifth and sixth. So that's, that's what I've got. Any questions?
Board members? Around the table?
Not today.
All right, neither. The upcoming meetings of the school board, I think we covered this, but special board meeting, March second, six-thirty, at the Middle School Media Center. Special board meeting Thursday, March fifth, at three-thirty in the high school. Friday, March sixth, at three-thirty in the high school. Special board meeting Thursday, March twelfth, that's the second interview time, at three-thirty at the middle school. Negotiations committee meeting Friday, March thirteenth, at three PM in the district office. Negotiations committee meeting Saturday, March fourteenth, at one PM in the district office.
And that's it, if needed.
If needed. And a regular board meeting scheduled for Monday, March sixteenth, six-thirty PM in the governor's room of the media center.
We're sure, Leonard, just also note, you have a policy review committee that is set for Monday, February twenty-fourth, at eight AM in the district office. Great.
Do we not have the mediation?
Yes, but it's not a public meeting. Okay. But we, we should mention that as well. So Tim, Nikki, John, next Tuesday, nine AM. Mediation session with office support staff.
Thank you. And these negotiations meetings are anticipated to work out a contract with our next superintendent. If we don't need them, we can cancel them. Those are committee meetings, so the three of you would work that out. Drew, you and I, Bill, Tracy would not go to that because it's not a full board member meeting, it's a committee meeting, so. Sound reasonable? Thank you very much. Well, we've gone around the table. We've heard everything that's on the agenda. Should we do something else?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I gotta gavel.
We're asking that ourselves. We're trying to figure that one out. It's not good.